Good evening, I'd like to call the work session for March 22, 2018. The Cope County Board of Education to order. This time, complaints do you put there?
Yes. Let us pray. Father God, in your name of Jesus, we come before you at this time, thanking you for what you allow us to experience in our lifetime. Father God, we give you all honor, glory, and praise tonight as we embark upon this work session. I pray, Father God, that you would guide our leaders, our board members, our superintendent, everyone that's affiliated with the Board of Education that's here today. We ask, Father God, that you continue to guide us in a feasible way. We realize that you are sovereign God, and you have all power in your hands. And I pray, Father God, that you would touch our mindset, give us the tenacity to make wise decisions today that will impact our students and our personnel members within this whole community, all stakeholders involved in the educational process. We give you this word today, Father God, and thank you in advance for what you're going to do. And we thank you, Father God, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. We ask then in Jesus Christ's most holy and righteous name. Amen.
Thank you. I need a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Questions on the agenda?
I'll have to do the motion if you don't go ahead.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Johnson. Second by Ms. Miller. I'm all in favor. Okay. All right.
All right. On the agenda, you will find the minutes from the February board meeting. And you've had a chance to review those minutes, including in there are the minutes from the retreat. You'll notice at the retreat, we talked about school staffing plan and lowering class sizes in fourth and fifth grades. So we're going to look at adjusting our templates and our staffing so that fourth and fifth grade, we want to make sure we don't have as high classes. Under this past year, we had one class in third and fifth grade. We're going to adjust to make sure we don't have that anymore. So I want to point that out, that the board did move to adjust that. And financial star ratings, we discussed that. Five-year facility plan. Any questions about those minutes from the retreat? The work session board minutes, any questions about those? Any amendments to make? All right. If there's no changes in those minutes, will be submitted for approval at the monthly meeting on the consent agenda following this meeting. Strategic planning update. We have Dr. Joy Perrin here tonight to present to the board strategic planning update. Of course, you know, we started back in August with strategic planning, so we have been moving throughout the school year. And we're ready to present to board a draft that we have pretty well met with all of our stakeholders and gotten feedback over the last six months and are ready to present the board this draft that we are touching up and ready to come back with next month as the final reading. So board members, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Perrin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Like Dr. Lee said, we're presenting this for your review tonight, and then it'll be for your approval in April. This has been a true collaborative process. We've had a purposeful collection of the data. We've had many meetings about it. We've worked on it. We crosswalked with the GSBA Vision Project Recommendations, Advanced Ed Standards, Board Next Generation Essential Practices, the Charter System Contract, and our performance measures and that. And we really think that we've put a lot of time and effort into it. The mission and vision are there. The mission stayed the same. We've heard from the community and most of the stakeholders that they really like Destination for College Career and Life, that the community embraced that, knew that, liked that, and we're going to stick to that. The vision, we added the Word community, creating a stronger community through an equitable and excellent education for every student. And I think that really brings to the forefront our partnership with the community because that's been very important in this. And then the beliefs, we use the acronym COFIE to make it easier to remember, and it really just kind of fit in with what we believe about education and what we want to do. And we hope that when people take a plan, just like our old plan, that they're able to just talk right through it using a lot of this. Okay? We came up with four focus areas: teaching and learning, workforce and life, people and culture, and family and community. And there's a kind of a fifth focus area, but it transcends all the other four areas. It's at the bottom, financial responsibility, because we realize that each one of those focus areas, we have to be physically responsible for. So those are the four areas. Do you want to go to the next page? When you break down each area, and I know it's hard to read on the screen, maybe you can see what you have, but those are the strategic goals and objectives and strategies and performance measures for each one of those focus areas. And you can put, okay, the last page. And what we're going to do, since that will be in printed form, and it'll look very similar to this, of course, we do want it to look different, but it'll be similar to this, we're going to have a balanced scorecard on the website where those performance measures, we'll keep up with them annually to make sure that we're on target and what percent that we're increasing. I do have the draft of what this is going to look like. Of course, not with artwork. It's my artwork, but we're going to give it to a publisher to really get it looking nice. I do have that in Google Drive, all 20 pages of it, and I can share it with you. But it includes what we have on the screen, plus Dr. Lee's will write an introduction letter. We'll talk about the community demographics, the school demographics, the Ford Next Generation Learning. Since we will be at Ford Next Generation Learning Community, and we did use their plan, we do have to talk about that. And then our process for strategic planning, of course, what I just went over with you. A lot of what we're going to be doing is focusing on the academy concept, career-themed academies. This will be a page about y'all for the picture. Who was involved in the executive team? And a lot of you were involved in the process, not just here, and we do appreciate that. Your guidance and support has been instrumental in getting this plan going. And this is the community participants. We're going to have our business partners listed here. We have a lot of business partners that we want to recognize that their input. These are our schools. And that page, it'll be 20 pages, and it'll look very similar to that. Questions? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Perrin.
Thank you, Dr. Perrin. All right. If there's no questions about strategic planning, we have our next item is the monthly financial And Ms. Yollin is here to present the monthly financials. Ms. Yollin, you want to go through those for us?
What we're looking at is the financials. This is the comparison of our fund balance for the past four years. And you'll see that we're currently, for the month of February, we're at $14,872,561.86. And if you compare that to fiscal year '17, at this same time, we're up approximately $3 million, and it's actually $3,73,398.38 there.
Any questions about the compares or two?
Here you're reviewing the detailed summary of the revenue. And again, you go through, it's got our expenditures as of February 2018. And you see our fund balance again.
Revenue has been strong and...
Agro.
Yeah.
It's been strong the past couple of months for us.
I mean, we got something yesterday that's not even been rotated in.
No, that would be my...
People are paying their taxes. That's a great thing. I know it is. It's good to be in the community where people do that. Sorry?
This is the summary sheet as of February 28, 2018.
That's a sign of good citizenship.
You need to upgrade your Android cleaner now, or your mobile slows down.
All right. You've got the monthly report there. I did notice with the SPOS, we were ahead again of the previous month. Any questions about SPOS? I did go out to Nichols School a couple of days ago. You know, we're building Nichols School with all the SPOS money. All the funding for that comes from local option sales tax, and they've almost demoed the old building behind it. It should be gone by today. I would think it's gone today. So really starting to come together out there. Look like it's finished. So I noticed with the track, we did the track recently, and they hosted a big home tracking. And these SPOS has been very important to the school system. I will mention, I know that we've discussed it before, the improvements at the Transportation Department will be getting the RFP results in Monday for that. So we're looking at the RFPs for the Transportation Department on Monday, improvements out there. And I'll let y'all know what kind of results we give Monday, and we'll go from there. But we anticipate starting on that as soon as possible. So we'll get on that. We'll look at those results Monday and then make a decision. So any questions about that? We're really anticipating it to be the number. Let's just go ahead and just jump on. So I'll let y'all know. 4-H funding request. I talked with the board several weeks ago about a request from the 4-H and Mr. Kevin Tatum regarding the position that the board has been funding half of, the position, and the county is no longer going to fund the other half of the position. And the board, after discussing this, is in support of us moving forward with my recommendation, and I feel comfortable recommending that from individually talking to y'all about it, and going ahead and recommending that we, the school board, fund the full position from the Georgia Cooperative Extension Local Office, or pick up the other half of the funded, the $15,000 that the county was paying the school board, but was, therefore, the school board will be funding the position completely. So that's my recommendation to the board, and if that's okay with the board, we'll place that on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. Question? Does this mean she's going to be our employee? Yes, sir. She would be employed by the Cope County Board of Education. I've talked with Mr. Tatum about the arrangement, and he has given me some detail on what position unfolds. And so, Mr. Tatum, if you want to come up and maybe you can address the board on it.
Okay. Well, I appreciate a minute of your time. This was just some information we tried to put together because when Dr. Lee's and I talked, we discussed what is she doing with the board, with the school system? I think we got... And on Friday, you'll see some pictures of some of our events from this year. On the back, you can see some of the highlights of what Elise has been doing with us. This position, she started in a position with AmeriCorps. And when we could no longer hire under the AmeriCorps dollars, that's when we came and asked for some support to create the position to keep her employed and working with the kids. On a monthly basis, you can see that when we go into schools and meet with fifth and sixth graders in classrooms, we do lessons on food nutrition with fifth graders, and we do lessons on science with sixth graders. And she's seen 15 of those clubs that we see in school. There's approximately 50 classes that we visit on a monthly basis, and they're divided up between our staff. We also, she's been helpful with keeping our lessons that we do up to date and adding new things to our PowerPoints and things like that when we are presenting. We also meet with older kids after school hours, and she assists us with those club meetings, and we do them on a bi-monthly basis. During the fall, we try to work with our younger kids in preparation for project competition. I've got here signup sheets that we pass around in the classroom, and this is just the list from the classes that Elise went to. And you can see there are seven or eight pages of kids that sign up that want to do project competition. When they pick out a project for a demonstration, and they research it, and they write a speech, and they have to prepare some visuals and posters, and we help them get posters made. And they go to competition and present those speeches, compete against kids from other counties. And that's why that top picture is there. That's the fifth and sixth graders that we had at DPA this past fall. And that's just a small portion of the ones that want to do it. But it takes a lot of man-hours to try to get the number of kids ready for competition. To get these 75 ready, we were working every day after school, usually till 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock, or sometimes later, getting kids ready for competition. We also did older kids, and they go to Rock Eagle. In addition to putting together a demonstration, which their demonstration's for seventh and eighth grade, or 10 minutes long, and the senior kids are 12 minutes long, they also have to do a record portfolio. So part of her time is helping kids on one-on-one basis with portfolios, and that's kind of like a resume. So there are a lot of things that we do one-on-one with kids, but then we also try to tie in a lot of community service. In fact, this afternoon, they were out on the side of the highway picking up trash for a Dr. Highway program. So we do pet therapy visitations at Shady Acres or Vista Park, and also Manor House. And we're trying to look at doing something new with the new Senior Assisted Living Center. So there are a lot of community service things that we try to get the kids involved with, helping even with some of the civic club activities. She's very helpful with us with creating our marketing things. Also, when I don't have enough time to get our school newsletters together, she's helpful in doing that. We have a lot of kids that like to do cooking projects for DPA, and so theirs is a little different. They have to create or get a recipe or create a recipe, and they have to practice cooking that and learn how to measure ingredients and code ingredients when I cut their fingers. And Elise works with them one-on-one with that. So the food projects, as well as her first three years helping, she started a food product development team. And this is a fairly new competition to Georgia 4-H at that time, and within three years, that team won State End. So there's just a lot of things that she does behind the scenes, but she's in school and working with kids all the time. So she is very much in the school system, Mr. Jones.
So may I do a little more? Mr. Stretcher, walk?
Yes.
We try to stretch her all we can. We appreciate what y'all do. Well, we appreciate the support y'all given in the past, and we hate to come and ask for this, but we weren't able to get the county to continue it. Representative LaRica is working on our state folks to try to get us some state funding, and if we do, then we can certainly cut back the damage that y'all have put in. But until that comes through, we're needing financial support if y'all are willing to do it. We certainly would appreciate it. Well, you can thank our board members because they're the ones who told me. They said, "We're all about serving children, and that's what y'all do." And so honestly, our board members thank y'all for funding this position because it is all about about working with our young people. And at this day and time, I think that hopefully our state representatives and the folks who have the ability to loosen up some funding from the state level will do that because I don't think it takes anybody very long to figure out we need to support our young people with programs just like y'all offer, and we sure appreciate it. So he's certainly been working those. We're in UGA under the College of Agriculture and Environmental Sciences, and anytime he sees our dean or our associate dean for extension, he certainly puts a bug in their ear about this position. He's working on it. Thank y'all. Thank you. We have been working with Altman Barrett Architects out of Ad Astra to work towards completing renovations for the HVAC system, the heat and air system at Coffee High. We're going to phase this work. We're going to start Phase 1 this summer, and they're going to start with the large commons areas, the gym area, the cafeteria, the corridors, the main office area. We're going to be able to do that work this summer. We have state entitlement funding that will fund up to 80% of this million-dollar project. So approximately a million dollars is what we're expecting. Altman Barrett is an architect that we are recommending that we go with. We have a contract tonight to ask the board to approve to allow us to proceed with Altman Barrett. They did assist us with our five-year facility plan, and we're real pleased with the work that they did on that. And this will be our first contract process with them. So wanted to ask the board to approve this contract with Altman Barrett, and I place that on the consent agenda. Any questions? As part of this work, we are going to do some safety upgrades at Coffee High also this summer. We will be able to keep Barrett has contacted our consultant from the State Department of Education, and we'll be able to use some of that entitlement funding that we're eligible for to also do some security upgrades. We are going to block in the front entryway at Coffee High School in certain areas and install electronic doors that have to be buzzed in and buzzed out. So the main area of Coffee High, if you can imagine, you'll go through the doors as they exist today, but once school is started, you'll have to be buzzed in those main doors. And then once you get into the building, there will be another set of double doors, and we will have a window that protrudes out into the main hallway, the main office at Coffee High School. And in order to get into the interior part of the building, you'll have to check in with that clerk there. They'll be behind glass, and they'll be behind bulletproof glass, and you'll have to be buzzed into the interior part of the building from there. So that will be part of the work that we'll do at Coffee High School this summer. Also, we're going to upgrade the camera system at Coffee High School as part of this work. And is there any other pieces of it on, Ms. Yollin? Am I missing this? The cameras and the entryway. We're also going to do some buzzed-in doors. I'm calling it buzzed-in doors. They're down near the gym area. There'll be a camera system that connects to the main office. Anybody that wants to come in from down near the gym, they'll have to be buzzed in from there. They'll be able to see them on the camera system. They would have to buzz in from there. And then the entryways out near the cafeteria where the buses come in. Once school starts, they would have to be buzzed in from there if they want to enter the building. So we're going to provide electronic locking devices on the exterior doors of Coffee High this summer, as well as the security cameras, and then upgrading entryways. So that'll all be part of this that we do this summer. It's going to be quite a bit of work, and it's going to take the summer to do it. So we're really going to be pressed. When you pull out those HVAC units out of Coffee High School, there's parts of the building that are going to be without air conditioning, and it's going to press us to get that work done and get school started back. So it's really going to be a lot of work going on at Coffee High this summer. It's going to be a busy summer, and we will be ready to start school, but there is going to be a lot of work going on. All right. If it's okay with the board, we'll place this on the consent agenda for regular monthly meetings. Georgia School Board Association Board Self-Assessment. We've got the self-assessment here, the board members. This was emailed out to you last week, and we will complete the self-assessment. We'll review these results and plan accordingly based on the results of the self-assessment. I know we'll be having more discussion about this at future meetings. Are there any questions, comments about this? We'll also use this when we go to our summer conference and discuss more of the results there. So... So this is something we could really use to prepare moving forward. Also in relation to our strategic plan, we can use the results of this to gauge all the work on our strategic plan. GSBA Exemplary Board Application. The board does have to approve this application. And it is due within the next couple of weeks. So we are asking the board to approve this application tonight. And you can see the different areas of the recognition program. We will complete this and get it sent to GSBA. Must be submitted on or before April fifteenth. Any questions about this? All right. If there's no questions, we've got guard nine-one-one alert system. It's become inherently clear that we need to be able to communicate as quickly as possible with law enforcement. And uh, thank you for being here tonight. We've got a new resource officer here tonight. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
But uh, we have been investigating an app that can be installed on every employee's phone. I talked with superintendent in Polk County, Georgia, who has this app. And she was very pleased with the system. And we are recommending to the board that the board approved the purchase of this. This is really information after the events unfolded several weeks ago, we went ahead and made a decision. And I know I corresponded with y'all unofficially and let you know that we were gonna go ahead and make this purchase. But uh, it is a, a purchase that does require, while it didn't require board approval in an emergency, and I consider that an emergency, the reactions of our public and they expect us to, to move. We know we need to move to protect our young people. So we went ahead and executed a purchase on this app. And I'm asking the board tonight to affirm that with a positive vote.
Any questions on what this system does? I was, I attended the uh, safety meeting with Gina, Dr. Lee's help, Dr. Banks, staff here, State Patrol, County Sheriff, City Police, Emergency Management. And this app was presented to them and they all felt like it was something that would be really effective. It helped them.
Let me explain that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. And one of the officers with the Sheriff's Department, Chris Elrod, informed me that he's already signed up on his end. That he's already gone through the process to get the, the app activated on his end. And what happens is if you uh, you open it up and there'll be a button that comes up. Well, this is not the actual thing, but each, each teacher will have their app on there. So if there was a crisis, they open it up, they hit the alert, and it's gonna ask, "Is this the alert?" And they hit the second. And it's gonna send out the signal straight to nine-one-one. It'll send out the signal to every law enforcement officer in the county. State Patrol, Sheriff, deputies, police. So within a matter of seconds, every law enforcement officer in the county, even all-duty law enforcement will be alerted. And they will show up on a map exactly where they're to go to. So wherever the alert comes from, they know within seconds that they need to be there. And so every law enforcement officer will know. And uh, the uh, law enforcement, they will have an app on their phones. It's, it's called something else. It's called uh, let's see, call it, I don't know if you remember it's uh, Shield. It's Shield nine-one-one. And uh, so they'll have Shield nine-one-one on their, their devices. It's all very secure. Our officer that already has it, he told me that there was a process. The company reached out to him, uh, did a background check on him to make sure. And so there's a, there's a lengthy process that they go through. And so we're really impressed with it and excited about uh, having this. And Dr. Newell, to our technology department, went ahead the next day and moved on getting it for our system. And so we're in, we have it and, and we'll continue with rolling it out. And uh, but we're just asking the board to affirm that purchase because our policy says that a purchase of uh, over twenty-five that I need to, while in the case of emergency, we'd go ahead and do it, but we do need to get board affirmation on it. So probably come back and make sure we follow our policy and the board approval. Any questions about that? Does that explain it? Two thousand eighteen, nineteen school calendar. Dr. Evans has been working for several months on, on calendar options. And uh, we hammered out two different drafts. And I'll be honest, uh, I like both of them, you know, I really. And I think it shows that our staff was split on both calendars. I mean, it is split. That's, that's basically fifty-fifty. Uh, and you figure, we've got a thousand employees, only five-eight-eight. Actually put their, put their mark on it. So uh, it's, it's, that's about as split as you can get. And uh, after looking at, if you'll scroll back to A and B, Chan. After looking at A and B and, and seeing the slight differences in the two calendars, I uh, am real concerned about the heat and air work that we're gonna do out at Coffee High this summer. It's, it's gonna be tight to get that done. The uh, extra time that draft B would offer us to be able to get the HVAC work done, I think is, is very attractive. I do recognize that we had a lot of staff who, who liked draft A and expressed approval of draft A. But I really believe that uh, at the end of the day, draft B gives us a chance to have a smoother start to the school year. I like the Friday start. That gives teachers a chance to get in the building on the Friday and uh, get their classes straight, get their classes going. And that weekend, if you start on a Friday, that weekend allows you, if there's any problems with scheduling and such as that, uh, you can get those things worked out. It also gives us a chance to make sure that the camera system at Coffee High will be working correctly. And that we can get the kids in the building and then review those cameras and make sure it's all working properly. And make sure that the air conditioning's working properly. Last thing we'll do is start school at Coffee High and the air conditioning not working the way it's supposed to. So I think if we, we start on that Friday, with that many students out there, thirteen hundred students, fourteen, almost fourteen hundred students, we can make sure the air's working. We'll run a full day on that Friday. And then have that weekend to adjust as needed. I'm really worried if we press it and try to get in there and start school a week earlier, uh, that, that we could run into some problems. And next thing you know, we've got AC's not working and camera systems not working and uh, just problems associated with it. So I think our people will appreciate having an additional week to start school year. So. Any questions?
I mean, I'm just, you know, I mean, you tell me four days. If we don't have air condition and cameras up four days, I don't, you know, I mean, last time we dictated calendar a little bit last year, we were trying to move an entire school.
Yes, sir.
We can come up with something every year. We got going on somewhere. We need a few more days, but I, I'm fine with even wanting calendar. I don't care. I mean, I, you know, I'm, I'm, my job doesn't go by that calendar. The teachers do. And I mean, I've just said all along, I'm gonna go whatever teachers said they wanted. And A was the one they wanted, you know? I mean, like I say, I, I understand. I mean, we can find something every year to get it. But need a few more days here or there. Uh, I mean, there were some other reasons why. I guess they liked day over B or vice versa. But, and again, it doesn't matter to me. I don't have to go by that calendar. But, you know, they do. And if they pick day, I know. And that's just one. But I mean, I'm sticking with it.
Yes, sir. Well, I, I think we need the extra time. Next thing, I don't like starting school anymore. We have to due to the heat. Something worked to happen. And we didn't have AC going, but they started back. We're going out to the doggies. As close as the vote was on it, I don't think it's gonna matter either way. I'm fine with B.
You got a recommendation on where the other one?
I'm gonna rec- recommend draft B. I think that uh, you know, it is, it's, it's a close vote. I mean, it is. But I do think, I do like the late start back. I mean, I, I do, I feel comfortable with the late start. If we go with the early start and we wind up with the AC work not being completed, I'd rather know we had a little extra time to get that done before we started back. We have it done two weeks ahead of time. Yeah. We haven't even put it out for bid yet. And we've got, what, April, May? School's gonna be out in two months. And we're gonna have to have it out for bid in thirty days. I don't even know if the bid package is quite ready to go out yet. So if, if we get it bid, let's say in a week, that puts us getting the bids back in uh, end of April. Well, that select contractor, that first week of May, we won't even be starting, red-starting work until uh, until right there.
Yeah, that's good.
End of June or end of, end of May. So it is, it's gonna be tight. You know, I think.
We won't go over it like that anyway.
No, we, we'll, this, you know, we're discussing it. All right.
We need to get that calendar set up.
We need to set an eye. We need a calendar for it. We need to know if we can.
I mean, we, we gotta vote, you know, and recommend.
Yeah. We'll have it on the, you know, regular meeting. If we need to, we can break that out as a separate item. I don't know if it's on the, the consent agenda.
It is on the consent. It is. It's the last item. Just break it out. It's fine. I mean, we still vote on it.
All right.
I just, like I say, I just, I mean, I understand we got stuff to do. We're gonna have stuff to do every year. If we're gonna, you know, decide which calendar based on that, then they're both gonna give an option. Pick which one we need for work. Pick to go. But if we're gonna give options and they vote on it, you know?
Yes, sir.
But I mean, just break it out. It's fine.
Next item on the agenda is Performing Arts Center. We've got the uh, Performing Arts Center. Quote, this was the ad alternate when we did the original bid. The original bid package, it was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to complete the black box here as part of Performing Arts Center. When we bid this project, we pulled that out because at the time, we weren't sure how our, our funding is gonna look and remainder of this was lost. We just uh, felt like we would go with the base bid, which was ten million, five hundred thousand. And so we pulled that out. After talking with board members at our retreat, we talked about looking and seeing what Jones Company could do on the black box. This is the original ad alternate price. And they have told us they could do this original ad alternate price. So uh, presenting this as information tonight, I'm not asking for, for any action on it. Just presenting it as information. And next month, we'll come back and talk about it. They told us the price would, would hold up for, yeah. So there's no rush.
As long as we don't need any imported steel.
They said the price is good. And the steel in the building will be there. They're gonna, it's gonna be framed out and everything. So that should affect it. All right. Um, two thousand eighteen, nineteen student handbook. We're presenting this as information. Dr. Banks, she have anything to, to mention about this?
I'd like to say with the handbooks, I mean, I brought a handbook for everyone of our board members here tonight, uh, from every level. What I would like to say, we'll be brief. I know we're not gonna pull them back tonight. This is a handbook from every level that we have, elementary, middle, and high, like grade nine to twelve. They're all here. And I remember as far as conversing with some of you earlier in the year, there was actually one concern that I can remember right now that Mr. Jarvis and I had talked about, and that pertains to the thirty-day suspension uh, as far as the bus infraction. We kept that in the handbook because there are times when things may happen that may be a little more volatile than others incidents. Because sometimes when you deal with an elementary student versus a secondary student, and that elementary student gets into a fight, well, at the elementary level, sometimes they get into a fight, but they're already friends by the time they get off the bus. So we look at that on a case-by-case scenario. But I would ask the board to look through the handbooks. And uh, we're gonna actually update some things. I know Mr. Cunningham has conducted about two tribunals that we have had. He's been to meetings where they talk about the code of conduct, some things that need to be updated as far as the law. Or in the state of Georgia, we're gonna update all those kinds of things uh, moving forward. We also have software now, we gaggle. We have on, uh, online anonymous tip-type forms that we fill out online. We'll update some of that in the handbook as well. I also think with the phone guard or garden, nine-one-one, those things that parents might not be aware of right now, we're gonna put all that in the handbook, most of that in the handbook. The one thing I have a concern about, sometimes throughout the year, you have concerns about a parent that has a child at elementary, middle, and high school. They have three different handbooks that they're looking at. Uh, one concern that, that came up would be with the cost that we are paying for the handbook. And I asked a concern, well, can we modify and put all the content from every school level, elementary, middle, high, have general information that fits every level, but itemize it by elementary, middle, and secondary, compile into one handbook? That was a concern. We're gonna poll the uh, principals on Tuesday about that. But I did get an idea about the cost, how much it could save if everything was compiled in one handbook. You're talking about twenty-five hundred or more uh, dollars that you can save by having everything compiled in one handbook. So those are some things that we'll be looking at moving forward. I will, I will be busy hopefully during the spring break looking at those things and probably inputting some things in for you to look at when we come back uh, in April at the board meeting in April. So those are just some generic things that, that we'll discuss at, at that time. Any questions moving forward?
You, you stated that the thirty-day thing about the bus kids and that you would use it on a case-by-case. Okay. Are you gonna tell your bus supervisor, director that information? Because when I contact him about some things with the little children and could you look at it on, I only go by the book. If the book says it, I don't deviate.
Normally they refer those parents to me, uh, I know them to talk to. He, he, he does, he does it, but he doesn't normally make the final decision. Don't have to try.
Yeah. But I'm saying, I know he doesn't make the final decision, but to make a blatant, you know, it could have been, well, I checked with my whatever. But just to tell a parent that that's what it is and that's what it's gonna be. And that's what was told to this parent that I was investigating that, that that's what it was and that's what it's gonna be. And by the time, I think it was a situation too where they put a first grader or kindergarten off for three days. And by the parent, by the time they got it worked out and she was trying to find out what was happening, you know, everybody was to meetings and doing this, the time was up. But it still was a concern of hers. But, you know, just so, I think if he knows that, okay, he, he can have an opinion. It's not that he has to make the final decision, but he can have an opinion and say, "Well, Dr. Banks, I'm investigating this and I think that et cetera, et cetera." Although I know you make the final decision.
We've done that on multiple occasions. Change, change it.
But on these two occasions, occasion, you did.
But the one you're talking about, you got to, the, the third day was gonna be the next day.
Right.
But on that, it was two-day suspension. And I told them to let the kid, the kid come on the bus the following day. So. And in, in that situation, you, you have one that what you're talking about was, did we give the child a conference uh, on the first referral? So normally on situations like that, when the bus driver has given directives over and over again, and that child has an infraction beyond that direction of the bus. and over again, and that child has an infraction beyond that direction that the bus driver has given, we don't normally give a conference. Because normally you got, the first, the first offense is three days, second is five, third is 10, and the fourth is you off for the rest of the year.
But if you got my child on the wrong bus-
Yeah.
And they have a disability and I, you put that child off the bus three days and doesn't make any recommendation to you that, well, this was a first offense, but this child was put on the wrong bus. And the only thing I'm saying is, he needs to be aware to have compassion. And I, I'm not saying for him to make the final decision, but he should have an opinion and can pass it on and give you something to consider or whatever. Okay.
No problem.
Anybody?
We've got, in the middle school and in the high school handbooks, we've got sections on chronic or disruptive students, but we don't have an elementary. But we've got some elementary that's, I mean, we can't get classes done and they can't do anything with them. I think we need to look at something that, you know, after so many, look at that for elementary school because we've got some problems everywhere.
And a lot of it boils down to the RTI process with response to intervention. That's, with a lot of behavioral problems at the elementary level, they try to go through that tier one, tier two, tier three type.
I've just had some principals obviously, but they've got, you know, it's a small number, but they've got a few kids and they just, they can't all have class.
And what they get-
There's nothing in there.
Right. Because we have some principal asking about alternatives to the elementary school. Like we have alternatives for sixth and 12th, but they were asking for that to the elementary as well.
And we have put that in the draft of these strategic plans as something to look at and ways to serve chronically disruptive elementary students, so.
Well, just like I say, I just think we've got a lot of them at elementary school level we need to address that. I mean, we're addressing a lot of things with the high school and the middle school, but-
It needs to be at the elementary. I agree. I agree.
We can get something like adding that in the handbook, too.
Yes. We want to update.
Dr. Banks has also been working with the local sheriff's department to conduct drills at all the schools. They had a drill at the high school this morning involving all the students. They had drills at the middle school and the elementary schools. And so they've been very active with drilling the students and making sure that students, years past, we, I don't know if they drilled with staff, I mean, they taught the staff, but now if y'all mind, we're drilling.
We have Officer Chris Elrod, who's taken over with the SROs. We went to Coffin Middle School with Officer White last Friday. We have been by every elementary, middle school. We've done all schools with the exception of Career Academy in George Washington Coffin and Carver and Alternative School. So we've been to all the sites with the exception of those two sites. And what I've seen is really, really has been very heart-wrenching because of what has happened about four or five weeks ago in Florida. Our, our school staff here at every school that we've been at so far, the attitude of those faculty members, it has been superb. I thought that the higher level, with the middle school last Friday and also Coffin High School this morning, I thought like the older age group, I thought they would act up a little more. But I've been really impressed at how serious, not only the faculty members are taking it, but the students are taking it very seriously as well. And I hope that I don't jinx anything going into George Washington or Career Academy next week. But really, in our culture and our society right now, we're want, we want to do everything that we can to make sure that our schools are safe. You never know when a lunatic is out there praying, goes and pray on some of our innocent kids. And I think that with the movement that we have, with the cooperation of law enforcement, the board members, and also our superintendent, I was very happy to have that opportunity the last couple of, what, since the whole month of March, to go into these schools and try to minimize any errors that might be out there moving forward. So the students know, the parents, the parents know, and also the faculty, they know that we're in some perilous times right now. So we've got to take everything very seriously. So I want to say to all the board members and our superintendent, I appreciate what you all have us do by making everybody aware of things that may occur that we don't want to occur. So I never want to get a call on either side, you lost your child, I'm telling you, you lost your child. I lost mine. So that's, that's something I never want to happen in anybody's life, especially right here at home. So I just want to say thank you.
Dr. Lisa, I have one question on, in regards to handbooks.
Yes, sir.
And it's, it's a lot of pages and it's a lot of reading and a lot of letters in there. With our technology now, is it possible that this capability can be loaded in an audio capability on our website?
I suppose it could, yeah.
That might be something that could be helpful.
Yes, sir. I'm certain we can see. Science textbook adoption. We have been looking at different publisher companies and Dr. Evans has been working with the publishers and been very aggressive on trying to get the system the best price. Thank you, Dr. Evans. But most importantly, the product, we think is going to be best for our students. And I appreciate your work on that. We have a proposal here for elementary science school books. Dr. Evans, you want to tell us what we have here?
I can. STEM Scopes is a, they have a digital textbook and they're getting the online text, but they're also getting the student interactive text. You know, our teachers are not quite ready to go totally online yet, so we're getting those online, those individual student texts, interactive for two years, just to see if we like them and if they want to continue them or not. So that would be a two-year thing. But the online text and the professional learning comes with six years of service. And the middle school is also six years for all of the materials used to be still there.
Any questions? And the STEM Scopes is high-quality, high-technology materials that our teachers really like.
The science standards have changed. You may remember that this year, we implemented the new Georgia science standards. And they are more involved than they've ever been. They require hands-on materials and students actually doing experiments and playing and discovering. And it's just a different way of teaching science from the old, we read this chapter in the textbook and we answer the questions. It's more of a cooperative, individualized learning for the students. And, you know, with digital technology now, they can, they can just see all kinds of transformations right there on the screen. So we needed new textbooks. It's been 10 years since we've had anything new in science. The teachers like this and the STEM Scopes is what they want to go with at the elementary
Our plan is to, to go ahead and get the textbooks for kindergarten through fifth grade and sixth through eighth grade. Science got textbooks, or the high school got textbooks-
They did, they said they didn't need any, so.
All right.
I didn't push them. They're good.
Great. That was the question. All right. We will come back to you next month with science textbooks and recommendations, but we just want to prevent that information tonight.
That curriculum will roll out next school?
Yes.
Is that enough time for you?
It will be. They can come out pretty quick.
And we plan to go ahead and get it in as soon as possible and possibly have materials coming in here to post-planting and teachers able to work with the material before they go home.
These align with the standards issue?
Yes, absolutely.
And we'll talk about this at the retreat or any reason why we need to vote next month.
That's a question.
Well, if y'all are good with it, we can go ahead and-
I mean, we covered it at the retreat. You've covered it tonight, the teachers chat, I mean, they-
Yeah, this is, this is about as lean as we can get it and get what we need.
I'll go ahead and put it on.
All right. We'll put it on the consent agenda and go ahead and vote with it. Thank you, Dr. Evans. All right. The next item on the agenda is audience participation. Do we have anyone here for audience participation?
I'd like to make a comment, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Throughout the fall and the winter, we've had several for HNFFA livestock shows at the barn. And I want to publicly thank y'all for the support y'all gave, the kids involved in livestock. The building is magnificent. We had a gentleman here at one of our shows from another county who said that our facility is better than what they've got in Perry, it's Georgia National Fairgrounds. So we are certainly appreciative of what y'all put into that for our kids. And I think they're getting well, well-used and being able to have kids learn how to raise their hogs and goats out there so far. And hopefully in the future, Mr. Stodden, Mr. Berry, have some kids with some cows out there. It's a great facility and we certainly have enjoyed being using it so far. And thank y'all for supporting that area, too.
We've enjoyed it, too, y'all. Appreciate it. If there's nothing else, then I would ask the board to move to an executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the employment or evaluation of employees, including disciplinary action or dismissal, periodic evaluation, rating of an officer or employee, and also to discuss real estate, purchase or disposal of real estate.
Any questions? Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Second, Mr. Jowers, if you'll pay it.